And good evening and welcome to the October 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight in our audience and we especially want to welcome leadership Rutherford. We're glad to have you with us as well and we're glad to have those that are at home watching on TV. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have Haylen Richardson, a third grade student from Salem Elementary, and Adam Bahul, a sixth grader from Discovery School, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have received a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I say none. Thank you. All right, communications. Ms. Trejo?
Good evening. I have just a few points tonight, so I'll go ahead and get started. Mitchell Nielsen Primary would like to thank the alumni and former MCS employee Diana Prim for their generous donations to the uniform closet. Those donations are always appreciated. TSIN has chosen Hobgood Elementary as their community partnership spotlight presenter at the Innovative Leaders Institute cohort on October 27th. We're very proud that Hobgood is the one that's being highlighted and that Murfreesboro City Schools, once again, is being highlighted by TSIN. And finally, congratulations to Black Fox Elementary. They received a $10,000 hometown grant this morning from the Tennessee Titans and the Dairy Alliance. It was a fun morning at Hobgood. And our ears are still ringing from the excitement, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good. The best of MCS, Dr. Duke?
Good morning. Good morning. Good afternoon. How about good evening? I'll just say all of them today. How about that? Good afternoon. I'm thrilled tonight to have our best of MCS presentation and not to honor one, but to honor three educators who are working each day to shine a light, not only on the best of MCS, but the best of education. Recently, these three took a prominent place in highlighting the importance of ensuring we are providing all students with excellent instruction through the use of our high-quality instructional materials. So with that, I'm going to ask kindergarten teacher from Hobgood, Ms. Nicole Dyke, first grade teacher, Mr. Martin Ridgely, and second grade teacher, Ms. Megan Maiten, to please join me at the podium. So as the board is aware, a few weeks ago, the National Knowledge Campaign's organization, in conjunction with the Tennessee Department of Education, selected Murfreesboro City as one of three districts in the state of Tennessee to highlight the important work happening around the state in literacy. During their visit, the team visited Hobgood Elementary and, more importantly, each of these teachers' classrooms. Now, every teacher and several of you on the board who have been teachers know how stressful it is to have adult visitors in your classroom, and it's even more stressful when they have cameras and are recording and documenting everything you do. But despite the angst any of them may have been feeling, these three did an absolutely amazing job and showed everyone in the state while they were correct in choosing Hobgood and Murfreesboro City to spotlight the literacy work happening here. So over the next few weeks, their work will be posted publicly and highlighted as an example of the work we must do if we are serious about raising literacy rates in our state. One of the visit's leaders commented that going into their classroom showed, and I quote, "What great curriculum in the hands of loving and supportive teachers in a district that is clear about its academic mission can make possible in the lives of young children." Perhaps Principal Bell, though, says it best when she says that Ms. Dyke, Ms. Maiten, and Mr. Ridgely are great representatives of dynamic educators. Their passion about teaching and the magic they create in their class from year to year is contagious. Each teacher invests the time needed to understand their students and make personal connections. They consistently come up with exciting and innovative ways to teach complex concepts while encouraging students to persevere through rigorous learning opportunities. They have mastered the craft of making students think the impossible is possible. Individually, they possess characteristics such as strong work ethic, a depth of knowledge, building relationships, and establishing high expectations for all students. As educators of our future leaders, they have authentically enhanced their practice and influenced significant gains in student performance. Ms. Bell says she is thankful for the impact they are making at Hobgood, and the world is a better place because of teachers like them. We have received really great and unbelievable feedback from the visit, from the campaign, and from the state, and I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank these three for being so vulnerable to open themselves up, to shine a spotlight on our district, a spotlight on our school, and for truly representing the best of MCS. So thank you very much.
Spotlight on education, Salem Elementary and Discovery School, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir, and we'll continue the celebrations of great things happening in our district tonight. As we, for our Spotlight on Education tonight, we wanted to specifically highlight two schools. We know that last year's COVID disruptions greatly impacted our students' and teacher attendance, as well as our ability to offer consistent instruction to every student each day. Despite this, our district continued to show progress in both ELA and math. We have a lot to celebrate as a district, and tonight, we are formally recognizing and saying congratulations to two of our schools who were named 2021-2022 Tennessee Reward Schools. Both Discovery School, led by Dr. Christina Boone, and Salem Elementary, led by Ms. Sia Phillips, received this designation provided by the state of Tennessee. This designation is based on their overall performance across indicators that are essential to student success. This includes how well they prepared the students on proficiency measures, on growth, how well they support students to make sure they attend school on a regular basis, and how they supported our English language learners. Schools are recognized as reward schools when they demonstrate high levels of performance and/or improvement in performance by meeting their annual goals, not just for all their students, but also for the subgroups of students they serve. And the reward school designation places a significant emphasis on improvement over the prior year or continued success year after year. Tonight, we want to formally thank and say congratulations to these principals. I'm going to ask Dr. Boone and Ms. Phillips and their teams to join us at the podium. And we want to specifically say job well done, and most importantly, not just for earning this designation, but for making a difference in the lives of our students. So please join me in congratulating both of them.
I want to thank Dr. Duke, Mr. Campbell, and all of the school board for taking a moment to recognize Discovery and its reward status. Discovery School has received this reward, of course, with it being a population of high-achieving students. But this current reward status is extra special to us at Discovery School because it's the first time in nine years as an administrator at Discovery that we have actually reached both AMOs in math and in reading, which are measurable objectives that the state provides based on prior student achievement data. This is an incredible accomplishment for our school and demonstrates the remarkable integrity and hard work of everybody, like our teachers, Ms. Kaiser that's represented, and our support staff, like Ms. Young, and my assistant principal, Mrs. Snell, and our student Adam and his mom, Mrs. Ballou. It takes every person at Discovery School to achieve the great successes that we achieve, and I'm very humbled and very honored to stand before you with this group who makes this happen every day for us. So thank you for these few moments.
Well, it is always a great day to be a Salem saint, and today is no different. Our creed at Salem is to engage, excel, and empower our students in and beyond the classrooms, and our teachers did just that. They showed up and did just that. For the 2021-2022 school year, we not only received award status, but our teachers worked hard, and we also got our STEM designation last year as well. So at Salem, we thrive on excellence, and I invite you in to see what I get to see every day. This honor from the state means the world to my staff, my students, and we just thank you all for making sure that we have the resources we need. We thank Dr. Duke, the instruction team, Dr. Pressnell, Dr. George, Ms. Daughtry, the whole team, Cindy Klisch, for coming in and providing us that feedback. And it's just an honor to have the support and to learn from those individuals at our central office level. So thank you to my staff here. I have my fifth grade teacher, Ms. Kayla Stevens, my sixth grade teacher, Ms. Abbott, and also my amazing assistant principal, Justin Lattimore. So just thank you all, and please come in one day to see the great work that we do there at Salem. So thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, action items. Approval of grants.
Yes, sir. The first one is the approval of the City American Rescue Plan Tutoring Grant. Murfreesboro City Schools was awarded $500,000 as a sub-receipient through the city of Murfreesboro's American Rescue Plan Act grant for our Tennessee All Core Tutoring Program. The federal grant period is August 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2024, with our goal of significantly increasing student achievement by the summer of 2024. This amendment budgets a one-time appropriation in the amount of $500,000 from the city's general fund to Murfreesboro City Schools General Purpose Schools Fund to be used for our 10 all-core tutoring program. The grant will fund salaries and benefits of 11 full-time educational assistants who will spend 100% of their time improving instruction by facilitating small group tutoring sessions. The tutoring sessions will be in-person, last between 30 to 45 minutes, and occur two to three times per week. And as you consider this, I want to specifically thank the city council for providing this for us. I say, you know, a lot of times our city council has been a great partner, and we go and say, these are the things we need. This was a time when they said, we have some American Rescue Plan dollars, and they came to us. And they said, can we step in? Is there something that we can help meet and need with this money that we've received? And so we just appreciate that partnership that they would actually reach out to us and offer some of this as well. So thank you to the city council on that.
All right. We have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment?
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Moore?
Just some timing questions about it. So it looks like the entirety of the grant is $500,000, and it runs the grant period could cover two school years.
That's correct.
It looks like we're going to budget it all this year. Is that, did I read that right?
That is correct. And we typically do that with federal grants, just like we do with multi-year grants. We did that similarly with our ESER grants, even though they were three-year grants, is we budget them for one year, have it there, and then every year we will rebudget any carryover money. One of the reasons we do that as well is it allows us, because after the board approves this, we would go to city council to get them to approve it as well, and then that allows them to approve the entire amount one time, so we're not having to go back to city council multiple times as well.
Thank you.
In the part, I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard, go ahead.
This is a one-time grant, right? So as we go into 2024, what will we do as far as replacing that?
So we actually have, and we've, to kind of go back to the budget season, we talked about hiring 20 of these positions, which we've hired those 20, and it's coming really from three, for two years. And it's coming from three different pots of money that the board has subsequently looked at or previously looked at, one being the city's contribution. A best-for-all grant we received for $350,000, and then we're making up the difference with ESER 2. So we have enough in those grant monies to get us to the, through two years of this with the intention of, this is specifically designed to catch students up from any learning loss over the last two years. So my hope and my plan is that within two years, and with TISA funding, I'll actually come back and say, we want to continue these in our budget because we're seeing good results from that. So this is really a jumpstart on this program to get us there a little earlier.
Okay, thank you.
The educational assistance, now those are new positions, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we will hire 11, and they'll be with us for at least two years?
Yes, sir, and we-
Hopefully later on, too, as well.
Yes, sir. We, we actually included that in our budget kind of conversations because we actually started these conversations really back in February when the city approached us about this and actually allocated the money. From that, from February to now, what we've been working on is really sub-receipient agreements because it's federal funds and making sure that we have the agreement with the city of how we're requesting funds, how we're tracking the data for the federal requirements and so on. So now that that has all been finalized by the council, I believe that was finalized in August, we'll actually move to the money part. We have hired these positions, as we talked about during the budget process, so this will be the request of requesting reimbursement from the city on that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Okay, approval of the- My glasses are fogging up. Tutoring grant.
Yes, yes, sir. This is, the resolution is next, and this resolution acknowledges that the requested transfer of funds that the board just approved is actually, and to clarify, is a one-time appropriation, and it doesn't increase or otherwise affect the city's maintenance of effort obligation under state law.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Settle. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. Our general purpose schools BEP Foundation.
This amendment budgets $25,000 donation received from Nissan's Better Education Partnership, also known as the Nissan BEP Foundation, for the 22-23 school year. MCS has designated $5,000 to be used for teams to compete in a robotics competition, now that that is back post-COVID, and $20,000 will be distributed among our eight STEM-designated schools and additional schools who may be going through the process this year. I do want to clarify because Nissan's BEP has been a part of the community for a long time, and prior to that, they, prior to the last two years, they have the mini-grant program where they would give out $500 mini-grants. Last year, if you recall, they switched that, and they provide both us and the county school system with a straight $25,000 to hopefully make a bigger impact. The way we use those funds last year, and we'll use them again this year, is any school that is a STEM-designated school or is going through the process to become one receives a portion to support their STEM program within the building, and we will continue that this year. This year, we did add the additional piece of paying the registration fees for our seven schools who have robotics teams, because this is, again, a program we're starting back up after now that everything's going again, so we wanted to help jumpstart that program as well.
We have a motion to approve the general purpose school foundation donation.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. General purpose schools gifted academy donation.
Yes, sir. This amendment budgets a $25,000 donation received from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation for the 22-23 gifted academy program. This donation will provide funding for professional development, a stipend to participating teachers, and supplemental materials and supplies. The donation was received in the general purpose school funds last fiscal year at the very end of the year, so it was placed in unassigned fund balance and is being budgeted this year as part of the gifted program.
Do we have a motion to approve the donation from the academy?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settle. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I should have said this early. This is, I do want to, again, publicly thank the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation. This is the seventh year they have funded this program for us. And Saturday, I had the pleasure of going by the office on Saturday and seeing 28 of our teachers spending another full day in training to move our high-achieving students. And we continue to get just unbelievable feedback from our teachers about the value of this program. To date, we have graduated, I think, Sheri, almost 190 participants of our teachers who have been through this, which, of course, comes with the certification of teaching gifted students. I will say, of the 187 participants that we have graduated, 140 of those are still employed in our district, which we're really excited about as well. So we couldn't do that without Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation, so I just want to publicly thank them again.
Federal budget revision.
Yes, sir. This is a revision to our ELC grant, which was an ESER-related grant totaling $3,343 to increase the building improvements line item to cover the increased cost of seal coat and striping the parking lots at Bradley Elementary and Hobgood Elementary. This increase in cost is covered from the medical savings supply line item. Bradley and Hobgood are the last two of our schools to have this work done, and once completed, all of our schools will have had their parking lot reseal-coated and striped. There are no new revenues or programmatic changes and no changes to fund balance with this revision.
Do we have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment, Mr. Settles?
I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. This, this Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Federal Grant, and we're moving it, this is like a line item move, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we saved money on the medical supplies line item because we didn't have to have that, apparently, and it costs a little more money than it was originally to seal coat these?
Yes, sir, and I think the, I'll defer to Ms. Williams, I think that what you told me was there's been five price increases since our original quote when we redid the first round of parking lots. So we did have those savings in those medical line items, and we did not actually include Bradley and Hobgood in that first round because they were the best parking lots. They, they were in the best shape. And so we kind of prioritized, and we said, when the first budget came out a little higher than we had hoped, but when we saw we had these savings, we, that's when we said, let's go ahead and just finish them all, get them all done at up to the same level.
So we can move that money, there's no problem with doing that. Okay. Thank you.
And this is the last year for that grant. If you recall, this is the grant, because we've seen so many with COVID specifically, this is the one we received two years ago because we were doing testing within our schools, and this money does have to be spent by the end of this fiscal year.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. All right. Federal resilient school community.
Yes, sir. The Murfreesboro City Schools Behavior Support Department applied for and was awarded the Resilient School Communities Grant through the Department of Education in the amount of $57,958. The federal grant will end June 30th of 2023. We're using a large portion of this grant to cover the cost of professional development and some additional professional development opportunities for our teachers. This will include replicating the Building Strong Brains training model that we've done in Murfreesboro City Schools before, and it will also provide professional development around mental health skills through our Child Mind Institute. So the one training will be used to pay for substitutes, when we will actually have to pull them out during the day to do some training. The other one will be done on the Saturday, and it will pay the teachers a stipend for attending. These trainings will help continue to create a common language around mental wellness and encourage these, these skills to be applied in the school setting. We'll also use a portion of these funds to increase our consultant time. As the board is aware, we do have a contract with a consultant that works with us in our office for a certain number of days throughout the year. This will allow us to increase her time by about 10 days to provide some additional training and allow our staff to attend some conferences on student mental health as well. And we are recommending approval of these grant funds.
Do we have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. Transportation amendment.
This amendment is going to transfer $50,000 to the transportation vehicle parts line item from savings in the vehicle maintenance and repair line items. Our current, we have several new bus mechanics, and they are actually now doing a majority of the repairs and maintenance work that previously we may have contracted out. So this is to allocate- So this is to allocate for that, to move money away from the repair line item into the parts, since they are doing that work, and we are recommending approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, reports and information.
Yes, sir. A few reports tonight. The first is our monthly personnel report, which you have in front of you as part of your packet, and we are happy to address any concerns or questions you have with that. And Mr. Ringstaff is available as well for questions.
I see we've hired a lot of classified people. But that's necessary.
We have hired, and, but we have done a, Mr. Ringstaff and his team have done a great job of filling those spots for us, for sure.
And, and some of the people that are coming back to do interim teachers are former teachers in our system, and that's good.
And I know that you've got, we've got, what, three EA to teachers? That's good, I love that.
Revenue and expenditure report.
Yay, Kim.
Thank you. That just brings me great joy.
Yes.
So tonight, before you, we have financial, a summary of financial information through the end of August. It's a year-to-date figure, so it just includes July and August, and we are still, the, some of our local revenue, property taxes, sales tax, those, those local tax revenues, the majority of the revenue we received in the month of July and even in August was actually for last fiscal year. So you may see a negative number, actually you will, $2.6 million, and if we just look at that, it's, we are still paying our teachers, we're paying our utilities, and we're paying all of our bills. It really is the timing. So the, the BEP money, the big BEP money that we get from the state, it's, it's a little over $5.2 million every month. They only distribute those funds 10 months out of the year, so we didn't get any in July, but we did get it in August and a little bit more. So we are in the process now of, in the month of September and October, these numbers will start to stabilize, because we'll, we'll be looking at true fiscal year '23 revenues and, and some of our expenditures. So we have closed out our books, we have filed our reports with the State Department of Education, and we're working with the auditors right now. So it's been a busy year. A grateful busy year. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on the finances? There's the lady that can answer them.
The only reason Kim gets away with asking if there are any questions, at least for me, because I just don't know enough to ask a question for me, Kim, and you explain it so well, so it's kind of like, what question could I ask? Nothing, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good report. Enrollment?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'd like to draw your attention to the enrollment page of the reports that you have in front of you, and at the end of the second enrollment period, so that's, we are 20-day period, so we're in the 40th day, which ended on October the 10th. These are the numbers presented in these reports, and for enrollment for that time period, we have 9,333 students. In that comparison box up in the top right-hand corner, it talks about the difference between last year and this year, and it shows a negative 87, so we're actually lower than we were at the end of last school year. I, I have another number for you, and if we look at the same time period last year, last year we were at 9,349. So we're only about 16 students less than we were for the same time period last year, and I will remind you that we have three less preschool classrooms, and we did do some rezoning and some cleanup of some of those zone waivers that we had. So that explains some of those differences, and actually it's in pretty good shape. On the second page, the PTR report, I'll draw your attention to the bottom of that page, and I'll give you a moment, because I know you're scrolling and looking. I have paper, and it's so much easier. At the bottom of the page, we look at the, at the PTR, the pupil teacher ratios, and it's broken down at the bottom. For kindergarten through third grade, we're at 18.63, and that's in the green box. The fourth grade through sixth grade is in the blue box, and that number is 20.03, so 20 students per teacher overall, overall the district, and the overall district total is 19.12. So that's, that's our PTR report, and if you have questions at any time, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Joe, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Remind us, and I was looking on here before I tried to ask, the state average or requirement?
We don't, we don't have a state average, because that-
I know what our PTR is. What is it, the state?
The, the requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, that 20, and help me, Dr. Duke, 20 for grades K through 3, 20, and then with and up with the possibility of 20.5.
Okay.
With the ability to-
K through 3.
To, to stretch it out to that, and then-
You can go up to 25 in K3.
In K3, I'm sorry.
As long as your overall average stays at-
Okay.
20.21.
So K3 is 25, and 4-6 is?
25, with the option of you go up to 30.
Okay.
If, in one classroom, if you had to, as long as that average stays at 25. So K3, 20 to 1, 4-6, 25 to 1, knowing you could go up if you had to in individual classrooms, as long as that average is the same.
That's why we look at the district.
It's just another way for me to brag on Murfreesboro. I know we were, I already knew we were way under and stuff, I just wanted to brag and put it out there. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
That's quite right. Under the truancy, on the truancy report, if you'll notice, for period two, we stand at 40 students that are truant, that means they have 10-plus unexcused days, 10 or more unexcused days, and to keep you comparison, last year at this time, that number was 30, so it's a little bit higher at this point, and we'll keep watching that and, and working that, in that direction to lower that number. And the last page is your chronic absenteeism report, and that's those students missing 10% or more. So for the second period, that means we've had 40 days of school, so any students that missed four or more days, and that's the number we're tracking. You'll see that number for this time period was 1,731. Last year, at this same time, that number was 2,031. It's like, really nice math, it's easy math, 300 additional students last year, so we've actually lowered that number some this year, and, and we're glad to see that trend moving in that direction.
If I can ask, what, what are we doing to take care of the truancy and the chronic absenteeism?
For truancy, one of the things we've added this year, a new thing that we've added, we, we use a multi-tiered system of support, so we have three tiers for truancy, and, and all schools work at tier one to, to encourage, you know, attendance, they do things, you know, throughout the school year to encourage students to be there. We've started just this, in the last couple of weeks, with a focus on Fridays, because we know that Fridays, our numbers are higher, and so different schools are doing, having different activities. I did read this afternoon something that was published for Black Fox, and they're, they've set a goal, they're getting their kids to, you know, to, encouraging them to be there on Fridays, and if they do, then they're going to bring the happy card around, which I understand is, is maybe some snacks or something that the kids will enjoy. Other schools are doing other activities to help focus on those Fridays, since we know those days are higher. Also, for, for tier two, then, once, once we're looking at those families who are beginning to have trouble, they've missed five days or more unexcused, and the, and the schools send letters home and ask them to come in, first of all, well, we, we want to give parents the opportunities to get those excuse notes in, get notes from the doctors and so forth. When they don't, though, then the school invites them in for a meeting, they ask them to sign a contract, they, they do an assessment to find out what the reason for those absences might be, and if the families has any barriers that need some help and assistance, we look for ways that we can do that, and that includes everything from counseling for the students to, you know, working on transportation, even, even if families may be struggling with just, just the basic needs, to, to have our social workers meet with them and help them with those. And then tier three, this year we're doing a new initiative, and Ms. Taylor I'm pointing to over here, and I, we'll, we'll have a truancy diversion board meeting, and so when, if parents, after having those contract meetings and following up, if parents and, and students are still struggling, we're, we'll have meetings at the central office, we're meeting during daytime, we're also meeting, having evening meetings to, to meet with them, to find out if other, there are other things that we can do. And we're just trying to avoid having to take them to court, and we want to help them, you know, find ways to overcome the barriers for their children, could be health problems, you know, and it could be a referral to our school nurse, but finding out what the, the root of the problem is, and then seeing if we can help meet those needs and point them to resources that will help them overcome that.
That's great, thank you.
On the chronic absenteeism end, we're, we're doing those, those things like, I like I mentioned a while ago, for the, for the focus on Friday, but in like manner, we're trying to encourage families to understand the importance of attendance. So we're doing a lot of messaging, messaging this year, and Dr. Duke's done several videos, and, and sent those out to parents to help them understand that absenteeism feeds into a, a lack of success. When kids are absent, they're missing important, critical information, and we know, there's, we have lots of, of research that tells us that when kids miss, it does affect their, their, their progress and their achievement. So we're trying to help parents understand their valuable contribution is making sure that kids get to school and, and get there on time, that's another critical part of it.
Yeah, thank you.
One of the, if I can add, one of the things that our schools are really, they work with, both Mr. Marlin and Ms. Taylor a lot with, is making sure that if we get to the point we have to take the child to family court, and we have to go there, or I shouldn't say the, the family, or, to say, we, we need at this point some legal intervention, that we feel very comfortable that we have done everything we can to provide those supports. And Ms. Taylor is really good at reviewing that documentation, so that if we have to stand before the judge, he can look at that and say, we've here, this school system has tried, now at this point, they're going to intervene. We don't have to do that often, and that's really the goal, we don't want to, we, that's why we have that tiered system. So it starts with messaging from the school, then messaging from me, messaging from additional staff to say, what can we do to help you get your child to school every day? And the board knows that's one of our priorities this year, is to decrease that chronic absenteeism number, we're on a good trajectory going down, it is cold and flu season, so this week has been a little tough, but we, we continue to tell our parents, again, if your child's not at school, they are missing that opportunity to learn, and we have to have your child in school every day.
That's good, thank you.
Thanks, sir, appreciate you. All right, director's update?
Yes, sir, just a few updates for the board tonight, and really just some things to have on their schedule. Again, we are, you know, looking forward to a, to a great second quarter as we get started. A couple of things on, so you're aware, on this Thursday, on the 27th, and for our families, we are hosting two third-grade parent information Zoom sessions specifically around the new literacy law and the third-grade promotion and retention requirements that are now in state law. We've worked hard from the beginning of the year to keep our families informed on what the law says and changes to it, and so this is just a next step. So we're doing one at 10 o'clock in the morning, and then one at 5 o'clock at night. We invite all of our third-grade families and any other board member or stakeholders who's interested in just knowing more as we get into the year to join us for that, and if you have questions about that, please reach out to Ms. Trail, and she can make sure that everyone who needs that link receives that link. So I want to put that on your calendar. Of course, this coming up Monday is our in-service day, so there will be no school that day, we, our teachers will be engaged in planning an in-service, and then our parent conferences are coming up on the 8th, which is election day. So a couple oddities around our school calendar the next couple days, weeks. And as I think about school calendar, I want to go ahead and put this on your radar as well, we will start actually working with our Teacher Advisory Council in November on next year's school calendar, so hard to believe we're already thinking that far ahead, but we want to make sure our families get their vacations and all that able to be planned out. So we will work with our Teacher Advisory Council in November, and then hopefully December or beginning of January, we will actually bring the board a proposed calendar for your review, once we've had the input from those stakeholders and our parents as well. And those are all my updates, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other business, I have two items. I, I'm not real sure who does it all. I know it's not one person, but there's several people, and we approved tonight a little over $611,000 in grants, and I'm not aware of if it's any one person, but I'm sure there's a team of people out of our central office that work to get these grants for our system. And because of their hard work and what they do, we were able to approve those grants tonight, and I think that just goes to show the togetherness, not only of our central office, but our school administrators, as well as our teachers and everybody else that's involved, on working together to make Murfreesboro City School System a top-notch school system in the state of Tennessee, and probably across the nation, and I think that's, that's wonderful. I would be remiss if I didn't ask you in a solemn method to remember the family of Evelyn Hardison. Ms. Hardison was a member of this board for several years, years ago, and was also chairman of the board for several years. She passed away on Saturday, her husband, Payne Hardison, local, what did I say, oral surgeon, I guess it is, and her, her children, but I think that was a shock, but anyway. All right, anything else come up for the board tonight?
I did want to compliment Ms. Karen Dodd on her pink sweater tonight. Only because I also have on a pink tie, and she knows why.
Breast cancer awareness.
Breast cancer awareness, so I just want to say shout-out.
Thank you.
All right. Nothing else, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.